Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, June 25 meeting of the -- for our workshop. And we are going to start in with a discussion about Class E liquor licensing and turn it over, looks like, to Mike Ludwig.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Mike Ludwig, mighty administrator, we've been supporting -- that have worked on this. First of all, Sue Donovan, our zoning enforcement officer, is here, as well as Manny Tribio, who worked with some of our GIS mapping, and also Roger Brown from Legal Department, who also assisted with the recommendations that you'll see this morning. As you're aware, we currently have a moratorium in place that actually expires -- is set to expire tomorrow on Class E liquor licenses. At tonight's council meeting, you will be asked to extend that moratorium to August 28. And the purpose of that is to potentially implement some of the recommendations that are in this presentation. Just a quick reminder, a basic basis for zoning regulations, they must be rationally tied to the use of the land, and they cannot distinguish between identical uses. And you really are not -- you're limited in ability to regulate conduct of a business. So you can regulate the use itself, but not the conduct. Very quickly, this is a map of all Class E locations in the city of Des Moines currently. There are 58 locations. This includes grocery stores, large grocery stores on this map, and C1 zoning also, in addition to C2 zoning. The next map will reduce those locations by 15. It takes off all of the grocery store locations. So this map only reflects limited food and limited retail sales, liquor stores, and gas station convenience stores. So there's 43 of those locations with Class E liquor licenses currently in the city. There are a couple different ways that you can regulate if the issue is, is the number, overall number, or the clustering of uses. There are a couple ways that we believe that that can be addressed. Traditionally, we've used a buffer approach to regulating that, requiring a separation from a church, school, daycare, or public park. And so what this map shows you is the current code, which requires 150 feet of separation from a church, school, daycare, or park. So the gray areas are those buffers around those, includes a buffer around those uses. You still see the commercial C2 zoning in yellow on these maps, and then the existing Class E liquor licenses are still in the red dots. So one option would be to continue to regulate using the buffer, but increase that buffer distance. So these next three maps show different separation buffers that we analyzed, and it should just, you should just see the gray areas growing. So this is existing code. This is what it would be if we increased that to 250 feet, 500 feet, 750 feet. 750 feet is what we currently require for separation of adult uses. So that was the maximum that we recommended or looked at in our analysis. The second way that you can look at regulating clustering or density of these uses is to require a separation distance between Class E liquor licenses. For the purposes of this analysis, we only put separation, a quarter-mile separation for the limited food, limited retail liquor stores and Class E, or convenience stores. We did not propose a quarter-mile separation between grocery stores that have a Class E liquor license. So next few maps overlay a quarter-mile, quarter-mile radius on each of the existing locations with the different -- so this is what a quarter-mile radius in blue would be around those. So you can have radiuses that overlap, but if the radius of another store crosses over the top of one of those other red dots, then it would be a non-conforming use. So you see some of those red dots and circles appear to overlap, but unless the radius actually crosses over the next location, you can have them in close, a little bit closer proximity. Anyway, this would be 150-foot buffer, which is our existing code, if we just overlaid a quarter-mile separation. This would be the 250 buffer with a quarter-mile separation, 500 with a quarter-mile separation, and 750 with a quarter-mile separation. So recommendations from staff. Of those options, we had selected the 500-foot buffer from a church, school, daycare, or park, and then adding the quarter-mile separation between just the limited food sales, retail sales, liquor, and convenience stores. With that option, approximately 36 of the 43 existing locations with Class E licenses would become legal non-conforming under these regulations. They would continue, be allowed to continue to exist, and so ultimately, the regulation may be creating some value for those existing businesses that become non-conforming, because they are allowed to continue. The next would be to, if the concern is about the potential for an increase in the general food and retail sales stores who may be seeking a Class E permit, this would classify a store that is between 10,000 and 40,000 square feet. So for example, an existing store that is within that range is the Dolls at Beavendale, Beaver Avenue, just south of Franklin. That's about a 28,000-square-foot store. If another store of that size came in, it would be subject to potential regulation. And what we're recommending is, is that we would still keep a 75-foot separation for those types of uses from a church, school, daycare, or park, just as they have today, and we would not require any quarter-mile separation of those uses, but they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment to get a conditional use permit. So a store the size of the Dolls on Beaver Avenue and Franklin, this would also address potential for Walgreens, CBS, many Dollar Store, Dollar General. We have at least had some expressed interest in those being the next, I guess, wave of businesses that would be seeking Class E liquor licenses. So really, the crux of this regulation would be to require them to go to the Board of Adjustment, and it really wouldn't be much different as far as regulations than currently exist, except for under the Board. The next would be to improve the Board of Adjustment review standards on conditional use permits, increase the lighting that's required on the site, but making sure it's not detrimental to joining residences, posting loitering signs on the businesses, preventing outdoor speakers or sound, and then putting the burden on the applicant to demonstrate their percentage of sales is compliant versus requiring the zoning enforcement officer to request and ultimately have staff review and determine whether there was compliance. So this would possibly require a, an audited statement from the applicant's accountant.
Mike, could you go back and just a couple more questions on that? You said possibly require an audited statement. You know, that's such an issue, is to get those numbers on a timely basis. I think we're dealing with that right now on Ingersoll Dinner Theater. You know, they take forever, and to me, if they're running a reputable business, they should be able to get those numbers to you just like that. I mean, you know, with technology the way we have it today, there's no reason why they couldn't get it to you within, you know, a matter of a couple of days. I understand an audit is going to be a little bit more difficult, but when they go, if we're going to increase the burden of proof here, it seems like we should put more teeth in that, so that they can't drag it on. We should have some time deadlines in there. And what do we expect from the audit? Do they have to actually have an auditor identified at the time that they would go through this Board of Adjustment? Can we make that a requirement?
Well, there's a couple of issues that come up with that. It's a great point. The difficulty on some applications is if they're a new business that has not established yet, they don't have their accounting records to even certify at that point. So we do have some businesses where it is, it's not a chain, it'd be a single ownership, single business, and so we would have to address how we regulate that. If we're going to require it at the Board of Adjustment, the Board would not have any numbers to actually review at that point. But for existing businesses, you're absolutely correct. It is difficult sometimes to get those in a timely manner. And the only thing that, really what we've discussed so far, has just been putting that burden on them to prove that. Right now, they're submitting numbers, and it's really up to the city to make a determination as to whether or not they're compliant or not. It's not requiring any kind of a, I guess, a statement of compliance from an audit, from an accountant, that it meets the code. And so it's really, we're trying to interpret their numbers the best we can. A few, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, there were concerns that the accounting or the audit requirement was too stringent, and the city kind of relaxed its requirements on some of the auditing numbers that were coming in. I know you had a hearing where one of the businesses that was being audited expressed concern about the cost of having a full audit done on their sales. So we seem to balance back and forth between wanting more additional regulation on the audits and then being cognizant of the costs that are associated with that. So it's clearly something we could look at as far as what burden is placed on the applicant and when that occurs. Additional Board of Adjustment review standards would be minimum operational standards. There are already a few in the conditional use criteria, but these minimum standards prevent theft. About a week and a half ago, I toured the new QuickTrip on 22nd Street in West Des Moines, was invited out to see their operations before their grand opening. Their operation, their new operation, has all of their liquor sales in a locked cabinet behind the counter, just as they would be selling tobacco products, require all those sales to come from behind the counter. So that would be what we're talking about as far as a standard for theft prevention. They do have some wine sales out in the aisles, and obviously, their beer is still sold from the coolers, but the liquor sales are locked in a cabinet and are behind the counter.
They also have the little bottles, too, because I was out there and did the tour.
Yeah.
Is there, can we do, look at restrictions on?
Well, the question, you know, in the past, we've, I guess, elected not to try and regulate the size of bottles sold or the make of liquor sold at an establishment. I mean, it's, the classic argument is, well, Hawkeye vodka versus Grey Goose. You know, we don't regulate the brand, and the size of the bottle is really more of a state liquor license, state liquor regulation than a zoning standard. So what we've tried to address is more of the operational of, okay, in this building, this use, how can we ensure that at least it's safely regulated within the building? And we believe that by having it in a locked cabinet behind the counter is a more appropriate approach. And then finally, recommending display of the contact information for the manager or owner. I know a lot of times, we, citizens have complaints, would like to have contact with the owner or the operator about issues they have with how things are being run or complaints. And so we believe that having that information would be helpful for both citizens, as well as if we have a zoning enforcement officer or someone else, a zoning inspector out visiting a site, they can make immediate contact with that owner or manager.
Mike, you've got 150-foot buffer on your minimum, on your examples, but yet in what you're recommending, you say maintain a current 75-foot separation. What's the difference between a separation and a buffer?
Okay, the, it's really the same criteria. It's just that grocery stores under our code still only require a 75-foot separation from a church, school, park, or daycare. So those are truly the general and large food or retail sales establishments, Hy-Vee, the Dolls, the Fairway, I guess, one instance has Class E liquor. Could include Walmart, their food center, those types of things. So current code only requires a 75-foot separation for those uses, but C stores, limited food and retail sales, the very small, under 10,000-square-foot stores, and liquor stores all currently require 150 feet of separation.
Thank you.
Yep. The next steps that we would envision, taking these, obviously receiving direction today from council, if we're on the right track, what we would intend to do would be to have public meetings in the month of July with basically the Class E operators current and anyone else that's interested in coming to those. And then we would intend to go to the Plan and Zoning Commission for a public hearing on August 2nd, be our target date, and then have council set hearing on August 13th for August 27th for your public hearing. And as I said, tonight, we are requesting that you extend the moratorium until August 28th. So that would be the day after your public hearing. And if it needed to be extended to that time for second and third readings, you could do so.
Mike, I'd like to see us also include in the next steps, that we arranged to have a meeting with Steve Larson, the alcoholic beverage commissioner, because he's expressed an interest and understands the issue of alcohol density in the urban areas, and I think that we could work side by side with him, and would like to have that meeting as part of the public input process.
Mike, one question I had, is separation different from like a density requirement? In that, for me, the problem isn't, you know, people will go to get it wherever it's at, but the saturation of it throughout the city is probably more of the concern. Have we looked at that? Is that?
What we've done on this is take the same approach that we took with the payday lenders and pawn shops about two years ago. At that time, and we still believe that just regulating the density of a use is difficult, it makes it more difficult when the operation of the business or the activities you're trying to regulate is regulated by a state, State Department or State Division. In the instance of the payday lenders and pawn shops, it was the banking division that regulated that, and we were limited on being able to, really, our recommendation was not to try and implement a density standard on those uses, and I think we would feel the same in this. So what we did was, as with the pawn shops and the payday lenders, we looked at buffer distances from residential or what we call family uses, and then a separation between the licenses. And so we followed that same kind of protocol with this analysis.
Any other questions, Bob?
No, I certainly hope that we can continue to work on it. Like you plan to, and your calendar, your estimated times in it, I think will work out well. I think that you've done a great job on it.
If there are additional questions or input, please feel free to email or call us, and we'd be happy to take those into consideration. Thank you.
We're a little bit early, Mr. Manager, but let's now move on to Housing Services Operations Proposal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before the staff gets up to make the presentation, I want to make a couple of general comments about the situations we find ourselves in with the Housing Services Department. As you know, Housing Services is funded through, primarily through HUD. It stands alone among the city budget departments, so it's not really something that comes into our general fund. It is operated, in effect, based on its own revenues. Over the last two years, we've had some fairly significant cuts in Housing Services as a result of federal actions. I think the number, Doug, if I understand, is about a half million hours' worth of cuts over the last two years, and then most recently HUD, through a policy apparently they've implemented nationwide, they've actually come in and recaptured dollars out of our budget. I think this year is around $100,000 hours of recaptured dollars. All of these things have impacted our ability within that department, and as a result, there have been a number of actions that we've taken to address those. Most recently, there's been a layoff of some individuals within that department, and we've taken other actions. On May 29th of this year, the City Council received a letter from HUD, which identified their results of a rating that they went through, and they looked at our operations, and they identified our financial operations as a result of some costs that we've incurred in these other reductions in budgets as a substandard performer. Obviously, that's a concern to us, and I know it is to you as well, and so we've spent a good deal of time trying to figure out how to best to address that. And in just a minute, I'm going to ask Doug to get up and kind of walk through the particulars about that. Just so you know, internally, of course, Doug is point person, is Director of that department, but in this case, we've had Larry Hulse and Al McKinley and Scott Sanders all working with Doug to make sure that we are pursuing the options that we know we should. One of the strategies that we've been talking about for a while has been the idea of building a new building or acquiring property that would allow us to vacate lease space that Housing Services is in, in the park or shopping center. They also lease space in various warehouses around the city. So the concept was to make that move and then use the savings from not paying the leases in order to help plug the budget shortfalls. There is indeed some merit in that approach, but as we've looked at the numbers to actually accomplish that work, it, the costs are very high, in the millions of dollars. In a minute, we're going to talk in more detail about cost comparisons of the two properties that have been suggested thus far. And I just, I just want to tell you that when I look at these numbers, it really leads me to think that we should hold off on making a decision about moving into our own space. And yeah, I think that would produce some savings, but there's also a huge cost that's involved in that. And I think that the idea may in the end be one that you want to pursue, but my recommendation to you, as you set this one off for right now, give the community a chance to kind of digest that, give you a chance to look at it and consider their options, and maybe there are other ways to skin the cat. So I'm not suggesting that you take it off the table entirely, but I do think we ought to hold up on making that decision for a bit, make sure we're looking at all the different options, keep this one on the table, but hold off at least a few months before we bring that back for formal consideration. And the last thing that we're going to do today is that we have, in regard to doing the new building, although I just suggested you hold off on making a decision, the information about the cost is relevant. We've done a lot of work with Rob Smith, architect that we use to do some cost estimates. Rob's going to give you the results of his study. So it's good context information. And keep in mind that on the agenda tonight, you have a hearing on the sale of the Logan Building to the Joshua Christian Academy. But at the suggestion of this council, we've gone back and looked at that building as a future home for Housing Services. And again, even though we're not pursuing that right this moment, those cost numbers are relevant to what we might do there. So with all of that introduction, I'm going to ask Doug to get up and kind of walk through the HUD letter, the content, the causes, the solutions that we're suggesting right now, and then I think Scott Sanders will have a few words to say, and then we'll have Rob get up. So with that, Doug.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Mayor, County, members of the Des Moines City Council, Doug Romig, Housing Services Director. The housing agency, with letters that were sent to the mayor and the council here at City Hall on May 29th, the Department of Housing and Urban Development created a new FAS scoring system. FAS stands for Public Housing Assessment System. It is a management tool that HUD uses to assist public housing agencies in how they manage their operations and programs specifically related to public housing components only. So this is looking at our public housing operations, not our Section 8 program. Again, it was a new management tool that was put in place. We received standard scores in three of the four areas, physical conditions, management operations, and our capital fund program, but we did receive a substandard score in our financial conditions. On June 11th, I received an electronic communication from HUD that they did revise that financial score. It went from 66 to 69. It went from 66 to 69. A copy of that email and that score sheet is in front of you. Again, the substandard is a new category for this year. In prior years, we received a standard score, and if we would have been rated under the old scoring system, we would have received a standard score again this year. The reason that has changed is the HUD has broken out each property as a project, and so if you receive a substandard score at any property below 60%, then you get that substandard financial rating. And we have that in several of our properties specifically related to operations and management decisions that we've made and that we brought forward to the Municipal Housing Governing Board in managing our properties. Some of the factors in that were the treatment of bedbugs. In the past two years, we've spent over $284,000 treating bedbugs. We are following the HUD regulations and recommendations on how to treat for bedbugs in all of our multifamily properties, and I believe the Polk County Housing Task Force, Bedbug Task Force, adopted those policies as sort of the standard that should be used throughout Polk County. So we are following those, however, again, that was a $284,000 budget hit. We did apply to HUD and requested if we could use our capital funds to cover that cost because there was no additional funding provided. This is a nationwide issue that all public housing agencies and other multifamily complex owners are facing. That request was denied, so we had to tap into our operating reserves to pay for those treatments. As the City Manager Clark indicated, HUD recaptured some of our public housing funds. In 2010, we had excess reserves. Housing agencies were encouraged to build up their reserves for future capital repairs or other operational needs. Last year, the federal government cut a billion dollars in the Public Housing Operating Fund, and in order to capture, to cover those losses, they recaptured funds from housing agencies across the country. Our hit was just under 104,000. We had an internal policy where we had monies owed. When a tenant was evicted, they would have 60 days to appeal that eviction, so we would carry any monies owed for those 60 days while they went through that appeal process. That also impacted part of our scoring because of the debt to cash ratio, having monies owed on the books. We've already made that change internally. We write off those debts immediately when the tenant is terminated. However, we do still pursue collecting those funds. Other variables that have impacted...
What do you write off typically, then? How much?
It varies from $150 from a damage to a complex to $5,000 to $7,000 for unreported income. So it's a big range through there. Other variables that have impacted the agency is our, we are not receiving any funding for our occupied disposition units. We currently have six units, and we've submitted a request to HUD about four months ago asking to recall those and rescind them from disposition and put them back into our public housing inventory. They are occupied, but we're having to carry those operating costs. And then we have excess vacant disposition properties that we are spending funds on as far as mowing the lawns, snow removal. That's about $23,000 a year, and again, those are unfunded. So we're having to use operating funds that could support our other units that are occupied or we're having to dip into reserves to carry the agency. Again, as the City Manager indicated, the other aspects of that is we've, as we're evaluating the office consolidation study and reviewing that, we provided two options to council. One was additional layoffs, which would have some negative impacts to the clients that we serve, or consolidate our office operations, and so we've intentionally have budgeted use of our reserves to carry the agency until that final decision is made. So just to summarize, you know, HUD's provided, you know, a warning shot, sort of a, you know, Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency, you're doing really well in these three areas. We want you to put a corrective action plan in place and send that to us on how you're going to address this financial score. We've already started some of the corrective measures, and we will continue to adjust our management practices. This evening, under this report, we are requesting a policy decision from you as the Governing Board. Two actions are being requested. One is to encumber $750,000 from the Development Fund that would offset our self-insured workers' compensation policy. Last year, we had a one-time savings of $54,000 as we went from a paid insurance coverage to the city's self-insured program because the employees of the agency are city employees. So we were able to capture that one-time savings, but we've budgeted $50,000 a year with the city providing that backstop if we had a catastrophic workers' compensation claim within the organization. Our history is fairly good. We had one claim in 1999 of just over $30,000, and since 1999, we've paid a total of $1,500 in worker compensation claims. So the risk is minimal. The recommendation this evening is to have you make that policy decision to encumber that $750,000 from the Development Fund as a backstop, removing that backstop from the city of Des Moines. And then we would set aside $10,000 a year to build up operating reserves to cover the initial out-of-pocket costs for our worker compensation program. The other action that's part of that is a request to transfer just over a half million dollars from the Development Fund into our operating budget to recover the funding shortfalls based on the previously presented information. That is a new initiative, and the reason that recommendation is coming forward is HUD changed their rules and regulations in February of this year, allowing public housing agencies to use those funds for that purpose. We do have HUD approval for the $750,000. I submitted that letter to HUD, we received approval for that, so that now becomes a policy decision for this governing body. We've submitted the request for the half million plus, but we have not heard a response back on that. And that letter was generated shortly after we received notice of the FAS score, and we started delving into the impact of that, which is primarily related to...
When did you receive that notice?
The notice was dated May 29th, Mr. Mayor, but I don't recall, I don't have it stamped dated on when it actually arrived in my office, but it probably would have been first part of June.
The statement that you had regarding the self-insurance...
Yes.
Because you're on the city system, are you saying that because really it's a separate deal, that's why you're taking the 750 out rather than have the city cover?
Yeah, our agency has historically been independent of this.
Yes, yes, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so secondly, does that cover both that cost overrun reserve plus a runout reserve?
The request this evening covers both. The encumbrance of the 750 covers, will save $40,000 immediately in the operating budget. The additional half million dollar request as a part of that action would be a physical transfer of money from the Development Fund back into the operating budget where we saw those budget deficits, the bedbug treatments, the loss of such...
Okay, on the self-insured piece, it's my understanding, and I'd have to ask our city attorney and maybe some others, that there's a cost overrun reserve, just in case you have some claims that are in excess of your experience. And then there's a runout in case we have to do something else and we're going to be on an insured basis that the state requires us. Is this to cover those two numbers?
This will cover the out-of-pocket costs before the insurance coverage kicks in, and we're paying for our portion of the insurance coverage.
Scott, do you have a...
I think Scott Sanders, Finance Director, there might be a little confusion on a payout or a runout. The 750 is just if there's an excess loss that needs to be incurred, and so every department or agency needs to cover that themselves, so he needs to cover that for any potential housing.
Because that's separate from your actual city budget?
Correct. The city budget would, general fund would be taking care of non-agency type employee excessive losses or excessive claims. So the housing needs to be able to take care of any housing employee or comp claims that would come through.
Which is a separate deal altogether?
Separate funds, separate sources of...
Would that be a third fund, then?
No, he's going to be sufficiently covered with this action tonight with the 750 and the $10,000 a year that he's got set aside for...
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out what we're covering that's coming out of your city budget that you're using the dollars from other sources to cover, and he's got some money in his account, so you're taking 750. I'm just trying, in my own head, having been through this whole thing with the state in the past, just making sure that what parts of it you're covering, whether you're covering, is this a third piece?
Mayor and Council, Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager. The workers' comp 750 reserve, if you will, would cover a particular event. Let's say that an employee incurred a million dollars' worth of workers' comp.
I got it.
The first 750 would be on the city's responsibility, and anything above that running out for the rest of the claim would be covered through the insurance. The runout that you talk about, I suppose you could talk about that above 750, but the runout that you talk about with the state typically relates to health insurance, not workers' comp insurance.
Right.
So this is workers' comp, this isn't health insurance, this is workers' comp insurance.
The 750 is expressly for the workers' comp?
Correct. And that would be coming from the Housing Services Development Fund and held in reserve, designated for that purpose.
I got it.
But still within the Housing Services budget.
Okay. Then let's go to the health insurance. Are they, is he going to cover that as well on the same basis, and are we going to need to make another extraction out of the account?
Health insurance is covered on a citywide basis.
Right.
We develop a premium amount, a premium that equates to what it costs us for every employee, and the Housing Services Department gets charged for that, just like every enterprise fund.
Okay, but are you going to ask them to cover that runout reserve?
That is built into their premium that we charge them.
Okay.
So that we build out that four or five million dollar reserve that we talk about in health insurance. Some of that was funded by the Housing Services Department, just as some of it's funded by...
On a monthly basis, as opposed to a lump sum to...
Right, on a monthly basis, and we're building that reserve over time, and we will have reached it by the end of this year.
But bottom line is, you're looking at $1.2 million that will be coming out of the Development Fund.
Mm-hmm. Actually, technically, yes. Specifically, based on our history, that 750,000 will stay in that fund. It's just an encumbrance in case we had a catastrophic claim.
But yeah, but if you had the...
If we had the claim, yes.
So it's 1.2 million, so that's the short-term fix for what's being discussed in lieu of the building?
Correct.
Which is a $6 million price tag.
Correct.
Okay.
And the 750 is a long-term solution.
Okay.
So we're taking this 1.2 million out. How much is the total balance in the Development Fund?
Right now, the fund balance is 13.7 million.
13.7 million.
And we do have some commitments that are outstanding.
Which equal, approximately?
Three million?
About four, a little over four million. Three and a half million to Central Iowa Shelter Services. We spent $200,000 renovating five of our 5H homes that are now permanent public housing rental units. We've committed $350,000 to homeownership initiatives for our public housing and Section 8 clients or any low-income qualified family that would acquire one of our 5H homes that we put for sale, and we spent just under $500,000 for renovation of our public multifamily properties. And then we have been working diligently with Scott Sanders and his staff as we evaluate our annual operating budgets and we go through our annual audits, which we've received clean ratings on those every year. So, but I'll let Scott...
Just very briefly, as Doug mentioned, we've been working with housing and giving them support on any, as a sounding board. As you've also heard Doug mention, the HUD and regulatory agencies he works with have changed their rules on them a few times, not allowing them to use the reserve funds for operating deficits, then changing that in February to allow for, setting up a new scoring system without giving a lot of clear guidance as to what that would mean and how they might be ranked. What you'll know is, you should know, is that all the easy answers have been taken care of. There's been opportunities to transfer funds between projects to raise scores for certain projects that are now being scored low, with low scores. We'll continue to assist housing as they look at their next budget cycle, especially with the own versus rent question. I think that will be something that we can assist in quite a bit. Clearly, what you've got here is a situation where you've got reserve funds and very healthy reserve funds, but you've also got a history that the federal government will come in and take those away from you and recapture those if they think that that's excessive or they have their own fiscal issues that they want to pull back from. And so there is a risk to leaving those funds just set there as well. So what we're looking at, again, is assisting housing with showing you, especially based on some of the questions this morning, what the long-term plan is for those reserves, and so that you'll understand what risks you may be taking by just simply leaving the funds sit there to possibly be recaptured. Again, I think you've heard this at other presentations, they've got a large budget annually, 25 million, but most of those funds are simply pass-throughs with the Section 8 and other funding that just goes through. It's not something that can be controlled, so to speak, or stopped through administrative costs. I think his operating budget is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million is really all that that budget encapsulates. So that's really the budget amounts that we're talking about as we review these. The other thing, just to understand, is that the actions tonight on the council agenda, I've also reviewed those, completely appropriate with the designation of 750, getting that approval ahead of time, so he knows that if, just if, there was a catastrophic accident with employees, that that would be covered. And then the transfers to take care of the negative, the deficits that occurred in the current year, fiscal year 12, as well as asking for approval to be able to use reserve funds for 2013 if necessary, which is anticipated as well. So again, we've reviewed all the fiscal issues, and we will continue to be a sounding board for Doug and the housing agency as they finish or look through their 2014 budget.
I don't know if it's appropriate for you or Doug, but going back to the letter that we received from HUD, and I'm just seeing this for the first time this morning, it has specific items under revenue and expenses, and we have a June 30 deadline that we have to submit responses to. I mean, there are some pretty significant suggestions under both revenue and expenses that I would really like to have additional information, explanation as to, you know, what do they mean and how do we do it in relationship to other facilities throughout the country, public housing agencies? And will we, as a council, since we're the governing body and are ultimately responsible, will we be involved and see these responses? And are you asking us to take action on all of this tonight? I guess if you are, that's a huge problem for me.
Let me try. We're really asking you to take action on relatively narrow fixes that get us past the hurdle right now. The items that are listed in that letter and the content of the letter and the whole direction desires or needs much more discussion and exploration with this governing body, with the community at large. So the issues listed there, I think, are ones that we're going to have to wade through. So I anticipate a lot more process and discussion here at this table and with others about all of those solutions. So we've really got to come to grips with a long-term strategy here, which is not what we're prepared to do tonight, although we have to take action relatively quickly.
But we have a June 30 deadline in here.
It was those two solutions that Alan and Scott talked about in terms of using the reserve funds that we have to address those right now. To me, that makes sense, but that doesn't address the...
That, to me, that makes sense, but that doesn't address the long-term fixes. Basically, what it does is it addresses the issues we have right now.
So I guess then the question, what I'm trying to get at is, the June 30 deadline that is here, by us taking action on those two items tonight, do we know for a fact that that's satisfactory to HUD? The way I read the letter, it looks like we need to have a response on all of these revenue and expense items by June 30.
Let me, let me have Alan address that. I think.
Mayor and Council, Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager. I think you're referring to what's on page two of the letter.
Yes, I am.
And just a few comments about their, what that really says. First of all, the first full paragraph, starting with typically, it, it lists these three great choices that you have that the city manager and myself discuss regularly, which is increase revenue, cut expenses, or do a combination of the, of both of those. That's in that first paragraph. That's, you know, pretty common sense suggestions. And it even mentions that, that these, that's what's gonna follow, listed under revenues and expenses, are common suggestions. It's almost boilerplate language that they would put into any letter to any agency. And if you read the expenses and the revenue suggestions, they've basically covered every possible action that you could consider to balance a budget. It's salaries and benefits. It's any contracts, look at your utilities, look at contracting out. They've basically kind of given you everything in the kitchen sink as what we normally do anyway in any budget process regarding any of our funds that we present to you in a, in a budget process. So they're all great suggestions. They're, they're basically everything that's in a budget. You know, what you're paying people, what you're paying in benefits, what you're paying in utilities, how are you managing your operations, your utilities. I don't think they're specific to Des Moines. This would apply to every, everyone who would receive a letter, so.
Alan, I would absolutely agree with you that that's, that's what it's saying. I think that what Mrs. Hensley is saying and maybe what I would be saying also is that this letter is addressed directly to the commissioners. It's asking for the commissioner's response to this and more specifically to the chair. So I almost feel like we need to, with you, walk through all of these things so that we get a good, solid feeling, while, you know, I think you're making good recommendations here. As Mrs. Hensley just said, we've just kind of received this. Apparently, you guys have been working on this for about a month. Is that right? So there is a question as to why we just received it, but.
And I think moving forward into the budget process, that's what's gonna happen. We will be identifying all the different alternatives that we have in reducing expenses or maximizing revenue that would be presented to the council, to the board, through the budget process that would correct all future scores in that area to the extent then that the federal government doesn't make further reductions in funding that will affect our scores. But moving forward, long-term, these are the types of activities that are going to be reviewed with the council to address, you know, long-term scoring results. So we, you know, absolutely in agreement with you that these are the things that we're gonna work through in the coming months between July and December on a more specific basis.
Well, and because they want a fairly specific response in the 30-day timeframe, well, I think maybe we can address it shorter term. I would hope that we could get on these with a rather extensive or more extensive understanding than we've had in the past on it, given this rather descriptive letter of our organization's operational situation.
And the city manager has already convened a group with Larry Hallson, myself, and Scott and Doug to start going through other alternatives to reduce expenses. Besides the, the first alternative, which was discussion of acquisition of a permanent facility. But there are other alternatives that we're gonna be looking at that would fit what's listed there on page two.
Well, what I'm hoping is that we can sit in on that group with you to work through these so we understand exactly what it is because we're, as a governing body, held responsible for the actions.
Absolutely.
I don't know if my question is geared for Doug or for Rick, but I just want to make clear the actions that are being proposed tonight address, at least in the short term, the issues that are raised in the letter. Is that correct?
They do.
Okay. And then I guess my second.
But Mr. Grease, just to be clear, to the mayor's comment and to Mrs. Hensley's comments, these are short-term strategies that get us past the.
Right.
Immediate issue that we have before us. I think you've all said that we need to be looking at the long-term strategies and addressing the solutions in a more comprehensive way. And we will certainly be doing that.
And, and I guess that leads me to my second question. Changing the reserve balance is just a short-term fix. That's not a long-term problem solver. I, I got the indication earlier that somehow that would present an ongoing fix. That's just a short-term fix by switching that 750,000 reserve.
You know, just, maybe this should be said. You've got a situation here where the, the revenues for this department, to some extent, are a function of what the federal government allocates in their own budgeting. The federal government has made significant cuts in this operation. So what you're really having to look at is trying to predict exactly what level of funding the federal government's gonna do here. And then, and then organizing this particular operation so that our revenues and expenses match. It's, it's a little bit different than our general fund situation, although similar in some ways. But the challenge is essentially the same. We have to figure out a way on a long-term basis for revenues and expenses to match our, our backs against a wall right now. We're suggesting actions that are reasonable within the resources we have today. And, and it makes sense to me to do that. But, but it doesn't address the long-term issues. That's, I think, what, what you're saying here this morning. And I think that's what we need to look at. That's what we will look at.
Can I, you know, this really, from my perspective, catches me off guard.
Ms. Hensley, Skip had his hand up here.
Sorry.
If you wouldn't mind.
Well, my first comment, and I don't know if it would be up to you, probably the mayor, to see to it that Councilperson Hensley is included on the copy list. I don't know how a person that's been a commissioner for 20 years wasn't included. But I think we need to see to it that's straightened out. My other comment is, and I understand that they've created this moving target and that we went from standard to substandard because of that. But I think that in our hearts, we don't want to be standard. I think we need, what would, the highest ranking would be outstanding, I imagine.
High performer.
Once, once you get the short-term figured out, I think we need a plan for a long-term plan to take us to the highest ranking we can get. You know, with all the accolades that we receive, Des Moines is one of the top cities in the nation. I think our housing should be reflected that way. And I think that we would be very pleased if other cities were coming here to see how we're operating with our housing. And I know it's a very long-term goal, but I'd like to see a roadmap on how we could accomplish that. And I think that everybody on the council is willing to work on this.
Skip, just clarification is Doug and his department didn't write the letter. It came from HUD, so we ought to give HUD the notification rather than.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay.
And just to reiterate a couple of points. The, the policy decision tonight is, is one piece of fixing this score. As I indicated in the presentation, we've already made some internal changes. We've, we're doing the write-offs immediately. We've submitted a request to resend six of our disposition units that we're not receiving any funding for, to get funding for those monies, you know, to get monies for, to operate those units. And so those communications will be attachments to a formal response. Additionally, effective today, we've reclassified an internal position. We had an inventory control specialist that was reclassified as a mechanic A. That individual will start working evenings and weekends at Royal View Manor. That action will allow us to reduce some of our overtime costs for trash collection at the other multifamily properties. It will allow us to reduce our onsite off-duty police officers. We'll still have that presence, but we can reduce that because we will physically have somebody in the building that can address tenant behaviors or call the police if needed. And also, we will eliminate our custodial contract for that building as well. So that action alone will save 70,000 a year just in Royal View Manor's operating budget.
Are all the units up in Royal View Manor, by the way?
Our lease rate within our public housing property is around 98%.
You had a whole floor that was down.
We did a renovation. That was redone. We had to redo our heating and piping.
Is that done?
That's all done. And we're about 98% leased at that location.
Ms. Hensley?
Going back, it's, to me, unusual that there would not be an exit interview and that members of this board would not have been included in the exit interview. How does that work with HUD? I mean, I've never known a regulatory body to come in and issue an audit or to do an exam and not sit down with management and/or board members.
The way this score is done is they actually poll data. And that was the change before we'd have to submit written reports. Now they just poll data from the system. They look at our occupancy rating. They look at our financial management.
So they don't have to foot.
They don't come on property. They just poll our, again, our expenses and revenues on the financial side. They look at our reserves. They look at our fiscal inspection reports as far as inspections of our public housing units, which HUD does come in and do an audit of our inspections, which we received good scores there. But everything's polled electronically. They do not come on premise. And they do not sit down with the management team to talk about the issues. We received this letter as the official communication and only communication.
Did they give you any hints up that you were gonna receive this letter? Or did it just show up in the mail?
I don't recall. I would have to check. I know we received an email, but I don't know if they identified the score. It just said that they were doing the scoring and they were, we would get the official score in the future.
Anybody have anything else? Mr. Manager, any comments?
Well, I appreciate the conversation here. And I, I do understand and take to heart all the comments here. You're right on target about it. I think we share the views and concerns about it. These are very difficult times. I, I think one of the things that hasn't been said that needs to be said, and that is that the, the ability of this department to support the different programs that they operate, Section 8 public housing being the two major ones, is a program that affects a lot of people in this town. And there is a direct relationship between our ability to provide that service and our ability to provide housing to people. So it is, it is a program that doesn't perhaps get as much discussion at this table as it, as it might really merit. But it's a very important function. There is a relationship between our staffing capability and our ability to, to deliver housing to really the most needy people within our community. So it's incumbent upon us to find solutions. We'll do our best to do that. It's a difficult time because HUD's making some fairly significant cuts here. This makes this job much more difficult. Appreciate the comments this morning. We have one last element here of this presentation. It's to talk about the cost of renovating 600 Holcomb, which is a property on Sixth Avenue, and the Logan Community Center. As I said initially, my recommendation is that we not proceed forward right now with the, either one of these particular options. The costs are high. I think we need to look at our, as we just discussed it, our solutions in terms of budgeting long-term before we make such a decision. I wouldn't take it completely off the table, but I think it's premature to pursue it right now. Nonetheless, we wanted to share with you our cost numbers that have been generated thus far. Rob Smith has done the work for us and is here today to kind of walk through the numbers. So with that, Rob, you're on.
Good morning, Rob Smith, Architect Smith Metzger in Des Moines. This morning, I'm gonna.
Rob, could you quickly, just in preliminary, how long have you been working on this? When did you?
30 days.
30 days.
Maybe 45 days. Time flies.
Absolutely.
I, I was gonna make my, my initial comments was I've been retained to review the Holcomb Avenue site and Logan Community Center. This is a kind of a conceptual review. I'm not here to present final plans of the Housing Department by anything. We've just reviewed the buildings, reviewed the building systems, and are making sure that the department can fit in the buildings in a big-picture way. And I've reviewed the two buildings. The, some of the issues we've dealt with is we've established the space needs for the Housing Department and the community action to know how many square feet they require. We've reviewed the buildings with permit and development initially and the, for major code issues and site planning. And we focused on four major areas of the two buildings, site access and parking. And again, my, my task has been to review big picture, what is the cost impact of working on these two projects? So certainly, site access and parking is an important one. The other one is the shell, the roof, exterior materials and windows, mechanical systems and electrical systems. Those are really the focus on that. Again, I'm, I have not been retained to look at where, where do the offices lay out and how are we using any existing walls? It's big picture. Look at the buildings and make some reasonable budgets. The first thing I review with you is the program that is generated. It is broken up into two areas, housing, which includes the Housing Department and Community Action, and then possible lease spaces that the, that the city has looked at that would be attached and complimentary to the uses. This shows that the existing space for housing is 21,782 square feet. That consists of about 15,400 office and 6,400 square feet of warehouse. After working with the departments on their needs, the gross, and these are gross square footages. The office needs is 23,490 and warehouse needs of 9315 for 32,805 gross square feet. Just to put this in perspective, 600 Holcomb Avenue has about 13,000 square feet of existing office space and about 36,000 square feet of off, of warehouse. The warehouse also includes some, some buildings that are supplementary to the main building. The Logan Community Center has 28,000, basically 29,000 square feet of, I've called it office space in there. That would include gymnasium and multipurpose rooms throughout the building. Potential lease space that the city's looked at that would complement this is about 18,800 square feet comprised of 8,800 square feet of office space and about 10,000 square feet of warehouse space. Therefore, the total shows that the total square feet that the Housing and Community Action currently have is about that 21,782. The needs, including potential lease space, is 51,006. Holcomb provides about 48, 49,000. And Logan Community Center, again, the 28,981. So this is just very big picture, what is, what is currently, what the needs are and what the two buildings would provide. In analysis of the required parking, we have, in the case, the first column is if there were no lease space and those complementary uses weren't there, that we need 121 stalls, 61 for housing. The Housing Department is estimating they have a large, large visitor component. And so the 61 for housing is a code requirement. The 60 is serving their needs for clients. And the 145 is if the lease spaces were used, were part of the building that would require 145 stalls. So the next thing I'd like to do is just review the two, the two properties in big picture on their site. These two diagrams are to. So the next thing I'd like to do is just review the two properties in big picture on their site. These two diagrams are to the same scale, and north is up. And then I'm going to take you through each building, and then I have some cost estimates at the end. Basically, on Holcomb on the left, Major Arterial, Sixth Avenue, North High School is there, and it shows the bus stop and it shows the yellow path from the bus. Many of their clients use Mass Transit, and that gets them to Holcomb. On Logan Community Center, access is from University on the bus, and East 17th Court is used and gets access to the building right off of Garfield. Again, the two buildings are shown and the distances for that. Next, I just want to review Holcomb. 600 Holcomb is comprised of an original masonry office building, which is here with wood frame, an addition that was done in precast concrete, then a precast concrete warehouse, a pre-engineered building warehouse, and another one, and then some outbuildings of both wood and steel construction.
What were the relative sizes of each of those? This piece, how big is this? Is this included in the total square footage there? Okay. So just to give us some sort of sense of this, of that 48,996 square feet, how much of it is contained in the building and its additions that look to be the right of the picture and in that other piece that I assume is to the left and on, sitting on the north edge of the property? Is that included in the total square footage?
Yes, it is. The outdoor storage that is in this area is not, but this is. That's about 9,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, the main building shows the office building to the right that was constructed out of precast concrete, and then the original painted brick building, and then far down at the end is the metal building. The back elevation shows the precast concrete warehouse and masonry building. The brick building is two stories. The storage you talked about. And again, they have needs for mowers and supplies and things that...
Sure.
...are in there. And a picture of the warehouse. The predominant system of the shell is, I believe, the warehouse, the precast concrete is an insulated concrete building, very well constructed. The roof of the original building is, although I have not been on it, there's no access to it, and it's a 30-foot ladder. So at this point, I have evaluated just visually from pictures and have a new roof in there, and the rest of the exterior seems to be pretty reasonable. This diagram shows how a possible conceptual, what this really, what this diagram really shows is that the Housing Department would take the building most northern, the northernmost part of the building. They have a shared conference area for clients that would be in the middle, and Community Action would be in the existing warehouse building. And then everything to the left of that line in this area would be possible lease space. So in the situation where lease spaces were not part of the project, then obviously some of the warehouse will be taken by Community Action. An elevator is required for this building, and that is shown just conceptually in that location to serve the building. At the outbuildings...
Is there an elevator now?
No. There's no elevator now. The outbuildings, again, are shown as some of the lease, or some of housing warehouse and some of the lease, or some of the trades, skilled trades building. And this shows the second floor being occupied by housing, and that provides the housing gross square feet and Community Action gross square feet that you saw before.
By the way, did you know whether or not, is this building, is this building listed? I mean, is it listed for sale?
It is not. It's not on the, it's not on the open market.
How did we find it?
I drive by it every day, and I noticed one day that the front entrance sign was down, and I went in and asked if it was for sale because we were looking at development opportunities at Birdland Park or Kiwania's Nature River Island initially for new construction, and they were willing to have that conversation.
Okay. Just wondering because as we're thinking about the options, how do we, how do we hold it while we do the due diligence or look see, so to speak? Here, we know that we got Logan, that's not a problem, but, I mean, somebody could come buy this out from under you, yes?
Again, currently, this isn't on the market, but the current operators are utilizing about 25% of the office and half of the warehouse space. So they're looking to stay in Des Moines, but they're looking for something smaller or a different location.
Okay.
Rob, could you go back to the last picture you had on there? It's a white mess.
Sure.
I'm curious, right there south of what you got is housing. It appears to be offices or something, nothing in there.
That'd be housing also?
You're referring to right here?
Yes, sir.
That is a kind of a sub-basement area that we have decided is not accessible, ADA access would be very difficult, and it's a dark space with, so we've decided that's not appropriate. I have not included that in the square footages of the gross area. It's just, it's like a basement area, and I don't think it'd be appropriate for any staff offices or any use.
Is there a first floor above it, or is it just...
Yes. There's a floor above it. This building is odd in the fact that, pardon, is that this portion right here is not contiguous to the first and second floor of this area. It's at a half level. So it's that, so the up-half level is nice space, below it is into the ground, and I just don't think it's appropriate for any office use.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that I'm using my arrows and able to show you all the pictures, I'll review the site plan with you. Basically, this shows that there's a large paved area in here, and we're reusing most of that. We have to add some pavement to get to the approximately 150 cars it's required. Again, we're adding some pavement out in the, on Sixth Street to provide client parking, and then we have a truck drive for access to the warehouse. At Logan Community Center, this is a two-story building. It used to be a school and has several additions. There's a park in this corner. The brickwork is pretty good. There's a few places where the brick needs some work, predominantly has wood windows throughout the building. The major mechanical system are just hung in the spaces. The system is, and it has precast structure. Again, this is the mechanical system that it has. From a big-picture site plan standpoint, there are 49 cars on the west lot. We're adding nine to make, there's 40 cars now. We're trying to get to that parking level. And then this one, if you look at the space requirements for Logan, it does not meet the needs of the Housing and Community Action, so an addition is required. Conceptual ideas to add an addition off to the gym that would be off to the east. Again, this diagram shows the housing in the gymnasium area, addition that would predominantly be for warehouse needs for Housing Department, and some spaces, Community Action has some warehouse storage needs, and that is shown on first floor. And then housing and some housing storage takes place on second floor.
Rob, how many square feet was that proposed addition?
About 6,900 square feet.
If we didn't go with lease option, that's not necessary to go that big, is it?
In this case, the addition size is, this, with no lease space, this only accommodates the space needs for the Housing Department and Community Action. So the warehouse is needed as part of the space needs for the Housing Department. Again, each one of these is, some analysis has been done. Obviously, at Holcomb, there's some very large spaces for departments, so we can be relatively efficient. This building is, you know, it's a little more broke up as far as sizes of spaces.
Well, I assume you're going to be putting some lease holders on the second floor.
At Logan, this exercise shows that there's no lease space. We're only accommodating Community, Action, and Housing, and requiring, because if you remember the space needs, this existing building is 28,005 or so, 29,000, and it doesn't meet the space needs, so an addition is required.
Well, I'm showing a difference in square footage without the lease at 4,000.
Yeah, you mean if you just take the delta between the program space and the, and what this building has? Yes. Some of that is based on just how, again, as I was talking about, the efficiency of the building. We have a much, much more circulation, and that's included in the gross square footage. And the other departments, or the other Holcomb application, you know, there's, it's one hallway, and a lot of that hallway serves the lease space, so the actual circulation is pretty small. This one has restrooms that, while more square footage than we need are all existing and are relatively close to ADA, so it's that ratio between net and gross that doesn't allow the addition needed to be 6,900.
Thank you.
It's just, it just has to do with the efficiency of the two buildings. It really does. Very good question. And then the second floor? So, big picture, I'd like to just paint a picture for you quickly. You saw in both buildings, very large spaces, not offices, not work areas. So basically, the level of work, for me, a department that you might be familiar with certainly is permit and development and the, and the planning offices and the armory, hollow metal doors and frames, acoustic ceilings, carpeting, drywall. That's kind of the standard, the level of finish throughout these. Big picture, the 600 Holcomb for housing services is about 5 million. The lease space would be about 1.5 million for a total of about 6.5 million if that project consisted of both housing services and the proposed lease space. Logan Community Center, if it was just housing services, is about 5.2 million. And again, there's no lease space in that particular building. Housing services at Holcomb requires acquisition cost, a relocation cost, the site work to provide the adequate parking. There is no storms, there is no sanitary sewer. Right now, it has a septic system that doesn't comply because it's close to the river, so we have to go over to Birdland Park and get the sewer. Renovating existing office space, that is the 13,000 square feet, converting the warehouse to office, an elevator addition, monument side, exterior and interior signage. I have a 20% contingency on the existing costs and about a 10% testing permits and fees for soft costs to bring that total to 5 million. Basically, in both scenarios, on Holcomb and Logan, and reviewing of the mechanical and electrical systems, we're proposing replacing the mechanical systems. They're meant for, they're very large spaces. They're not zoned for office use. There's, as you saw, there's no duct work in Logan, and the system at Holcomb is horizontal furnaces in the ceiling and just wouldn't provide the adequate needs for the new uses. So it's a new mechanical system. The electric service in both of them are antiquated and need to be updated, and they both are sprinklered. The Holcomb is existing sprinklered in the warehouse, but we are sprinklering both buildings. The lease space, it's appropriate site work, converting the office to warehouse. I'm sorry, that cut off. Convert building for skilled trades. That's that outbuilding, and it's a signage, again, contingency and testing and permit. And then Logan, we have an acquisition cost that's very low, zero relocation. We're including a lighted crosswalk down at University because, to get people across university onto the site. Renovating the existing office space in addition. The elevator needs to be only updated. The other cost for elevator includes a small addition, and again, it's 20% contingency and 10% soft cost. Brings that to 5.2.
If I could quickly ask you about this, we had some discussion earlier about this, but if we walk through it, the acquisition cost, but who has it and who's getting paid on that?
That's a number...
What's the 142,000, Doug?
Mayor members of the city, Council Doug Romig, Housing Services Director. The 142,000, this is an asset owned by the city, so if the housing agency bought it, we would buy it from the city. The $100,000 is the price for Logan Community Center. The real estate division estimated that the value of Crowley Park would be 42,000. In the slides, we would encumber, the parking lot and the addition would both go into Crowley Park. So that's how that number was derived, was the acquisition of the building and the acquisition of the park.
Okay. So, because we've got an item on the agenda this evening, at least a proposal to buy the thing for $100,000 doesn't include the Crowley Park?
Correct. That does not include Crowley Park.
Okay. So the other numbers that we talked about it quite extensively in a number of meetings, Doug, was 240,000 to upgrade, update the building over there, and then we figured some other contingency that we'd double it, I mean, in my own mind, to 500,000. Here, all of a sudden, we're looking at 5.1 million. There's certainly a huge difference between what our architect thinks and obviously what staff has thought, bringing in all of our building departments, bringing in your folks and community development. How do we, how do we miss it by 4.5 million dollars?
Rob's probably more the expert on this, but my understanding in the work that the park staff did when they went through the building was using the existing systems and replacing the boiler and the HVAC unit only. And that's where that $200,000 cost estimate came from. There was no duct work, no convert, because the request from Joshua is to utilize it as a school, so those spaces aren't being converted, and the... And the, the cost, again, was just to replace the boiler and the air conditioning unit, is my understanding. That was done by Park Staff. Where Mr. Smith is looking at doing the duct work in a whole different type of system because of the office. But I'll let him...
Well, it also included the elevator. It included window replacement. It included some updating cosmetic stuff in, in all those estimates because they were quite specific when we walked through it.
Mr. Mayor, I was not part of those discussions. And that was handled by the Parks and Recreation Department. I wasn't on that tour. So I'm not sure what was presented. My understanding was the 200,000 was related to the elevator and the HVAC systems, but...
Okay, well, you were at the meeting when we met with Joshua and some neighborhood leaders in the, I guess, the multipurpose room or whatever we call that thing?
Correct.
In which they went over those same numbers. Go ahead.
Rob Smith, Architects, Smith &amp; Busker. I am aware of the $250,000 number that was done. Just to put this in perspective, if we were to replace the carpeting and the ceiling tile in the building, it's about $200,000. My estimates would include creating a space, as you saw, some of those very large open space, creating offices, doors, windows, those sort of things. That must not have been in the $250,000. It had to be using the space mostly as it was. But that's what this estimate represents, is creating and taking the space and utilizing the space and renovating it to meet the needs of the housing department.
Rob, is there any reason why the proposed addition couldn't go north of the East Gym instead of into Crowley Park?
Good question.
That last, there's a good one there.
Again, at this time of this conceptual planning, that is the next step, is to decide where that would really go, what it would do. Right now, all I'm indicating is that an addition is needed. It's 6,900 square feet. It's about $125 a square foot for the addition. And that's a place it could go. I think the next step would be to take either one of these ideas and get down to that detail of where it would go.
Yeah, the other question is if we need additional parking there. It could go between the north parking lot and East 17th Court into that turnaround area.
Add some parking here?
Yes, instead of going into the park at the south end of the gym and into Crowley Park.
Yes.
I think that's a big concern. That's an old park there in the neighborhood. It's highly used.
Again, what, what this really, this exercise shows is we need about 80 cars added. And I have so many square feet per car for some pavement. So those are, when we get down to the site planning, yes.
Thank you.
So, Rob, I'm assuming that you could take that piece off that takes a bit of that park and put it to the north there up against the building, right? Of the 71-car parking lot, you could just pivot that and put it in that green area north of the...
Right here?
Yep.
Yes, again.
So you wouldn't have to take the park out?
That's right. And the, the next step would be to, again, take either idea and begin to get into that level of detail with a, you know, survey, topography, understanding, all of those issues. And, but at this point, if you, if I say, if I make a different diagram, I'm not going to change the budget. I'm trying to take big picture. I have, I know I need to add parking. And that's what the budget represents.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Any... Don't know whether we're commissioners or council members at this point. But anybody have anything else? All right, why don't we open it up to the general public? Anybody have any thoughts or comments about any of these subjects we've spoken to today?
Good morning. My name is Pam Carmichael. I reside at 1504 Thompson Avenue in Des Moines. I'm here this morning for the discussion on the public housing. I think people are probably aware of that. I am very pleased that you're going to put the building on hold, the idea of the building on hold. I was not aware of the letter in regard to the issues of public housing. I've not seen that letter. And I am happy to hear that you will address some of the issues in that area. I was also happy to hear the city manager say that the housing is an important piece to Des Moines because I too believe that's true. That they serve a very important purpose in our community. They are the largest provider of affordable housing in the city of Des Moines, probably in the state as far as any general municipality. I know there are issues with that public housing. I know that 10 years ago, I stood here with colleagues talking about the disposition of the housing in order to come up with this thing that we call the Development Fund. I haven't had time to look at the building. And actually, I'd have a consolidated office space for public housing. I mean, that, that is the business of the city, what they need to determine. I'm here because I'm so strongly opposed to doing that using the development funds. I know that a number of nonprofits, when the city was having, was struggling with public housing 10 years ago in the same type of financial situation, that was determined that we would dispose of 394 units of public housing, that the funds generated from that would not only help us improve the housing which we had, which it has done, but also would lessen the burden of public housing, would reduce their costs. We're back in kind of the same position now. Not quite as bad, I know not as bad. And I don't oppose the use of the reserve funds. I'm sorry, not the reserve funds. The development funds to help public housing with its major mission. But I do think there's other ways that that money should be used to support affordable housing in the community. And I think the use of over half of it to go into an office space, which you can't convince me at this point in time, is going to generate additional revenue for, for the Public Housing Authority. I think, quite honestly, I think that that's just wrong use of those funds. I would encourage the Public Housing Authority to work with other agencies within the community on collaborative ways that those funds could be used. I think that there's ways that they could be used to address a number of the issues we have here. Some of those issues which are taken up at the Homeless Coordinating Council on a regular basis. Some of the issues perhaps that we have with operating. I just think it's really too soon to take a look at using those funds for a building. Thank you.
Pam, quick question for you. Is it a fair statement that a lot of the nonprofits incurred additional debt as a result of decisions made?
I can only speak on Home, Inc. When I went back and looked at it, Home, Inc. purchased a total of 29 units from public housing, 17 that were single-family and then 12 that were duplexes. It cost us 1.7 million dollars to acquire those units. We used primarily loan funds from that. We used loans from Bankers Trust, from a couple of the sources that we worked with, a foundation out in Denver. But it was 1.7 million. We used another almost $930,000 of city home funds. Now, we would have used those on housing regardless, but we would have used them on different housing projects. We used another half a million dollars of Polk County Housing Trust fund dollars. So I do know that, you know, we, Home, Inc. made an investment in that of, can't do the numbers in my head, almost, what would it be, to about 3.2 million dollars in 30 units of public housing, which we bought and then also, and sold to low-income buyers. It was a good purpose. We do not nearly serve the population that public housing serves. Our clients have a higher income. All of our clients were required to, you know, buy those houses. And that 1.7 million which Home, Inc. borrowed actually now is in the hands of our clients because they assume most of our loans on those projects. Home, Inc., I think, if you looked at the public housing, the organizations bought public housing. We were kind of in the middle. I know Anowim Housing bought twice as much as we did. And I have no idea what their figures were on Pioneer Woods. But we, yes, Chris, we did go in, we did borrow to purchase those properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I want to thank everybody for coming down this morning. And we will see this evening at City Council for those of you who are so inclined. Thanks. Regent.